Play please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, would you please, please, uh, prayer?
Sure.
Everyone would please bow their heads. Dear heavenly father, we thank and praise you for this time of the year, for the reminders you give us as to why we are here and what we should be thankful for. Dear lord, I pray that you watch over us this evening as we go about the business of this city, that it could be pleasing for you. And lord, I pray that you watch over all of us as we spend time with friends and family throughout the Christmas holiday season. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dan. All right, uh, reading approval of the minutes from December 5th. It looks like you two are gonna be busy making motions and a little short handed tonight.
Motion to approve and suspend.
A motion by half.
And I'll second that.
Second by pillar, discussion. All in favor of the minute, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you. All right, approval of the agenda, any changes? Monty, anything different?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by pillar.
Second.
Second by half, discussion. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, thank you. Five A, engineers report. As you can see, um, we did get a little update from Grant and there's nothing, no action for me, nothing needs approval. Monty, do you hear anything else today?
If you have any questions for anything, but no, I was nothing.
Okay, Dave, we got. All right, um. If we don't have any questions, we won't contact them, we'll just move on. Engineers report for re-reading. Moving down. Down to eight A. Approval of the liquor license applications.
I have received those as noted in the notes. The applications have been returned while with fees. So, you wanna approve them individually or you just wanna do a blank emotion?
The list is the same as last year?
Yes.
And everybody?
One less, B's Cafe Detox, bringing their license.
Gotcha.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the, the entire lot.
Okay, motion by pillar?
Second.
Second by hack, discussion. I'm, I'm pretty sure we went over this last year too, Monty, but is the golf course?
Nope.
The, in the county?
It's in the county.
Okay, all right, that's the only one that I had to question on.
Monty, did Chris just not have a good turnout with that or?
Yeah, he just said it wasn't worth it for the few times that he did offer alcoholic beverages.
Certainly. And not open for supper, so most people can't drink at lunchtime if they were legal.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second, any more discussions? Roll call.
Hiller, aye.
Hack, aye.
Over Hiller.
Aye. Motion carried. Reports. Dan?
Okay, I, a- as everyone knows, we've gone live now with the new water storage facility. We had a few wrinkles with regard to some water leaks underground. I know that in the course of going after some of those leaks, we dug, we moved, we dug a little bit like that. Having some conversations with Dave and, and our water guys, we talked about resources available to assist in helping find some of these different water leaks and stuff below the surface. And we have relied on outside resources to come in that have the, the equipment that does that, uh, which creates that sometimes, you know, a time delay and availability of that equipment to come in and help us locate those late leaks. So in the course of our conversation, uh, they, the particular piece of equipment that they've been working with, with the outside folks, uh, they were able to get a quote for that, uh, and Monty and I had some conversations on availability of funds before the end of the year here. Uh, what I've got is what's referred to as an LD-15, it's a water leak detector. And it's, it, it, to make it very, very simple, it's kinda like a, a metal detector from the standpoint that you put on your, your earmuffs and then it creates noise. And there's different frequency settings that you can put on these devices for the different types of leaks that, or the different types of conditions that you're looking at. So you can literally set this up so that you're going through asphalt and through, through the ground, through the dirt, so that you can pinpoint these, these anomalies on the piping and stuff underground. It also has settings to where you can literally go to your, your fire hydrants and some of your different locations like that, and you can, you can attach a mechanism there and you can get readings to where you can hear if there's, uh, some anomalies occurring and allow you to track that down. So the long and short of it is, uh, the bid came back in at, uh, just a smidge over four thousand, four thousand one hundred dollars for this device. It runs on C-cell batteries, so that's pretty straightforward and, and about an eighty hour runtime on C-cell batteries. So we don't have to worry about, you know, recycling batteries and different things like that with this thing. But we had, we had kind of lengthy conversation and, and I told them in my years out at DGC, we had different types of leak detection systems like this. And, uh, sometimes it's the difference between spending an awful lot of money excavating in multiple locations, uh, to where the upfront cost is, is paid for, you know, almost instantly on that. So with all of that battle, I would make a motion that we entertain the purchase of one of these LD-15 water leak detectors at the cost of forty-one hundred dollars plus some sales tax probably incorporated into that.
Here we have a motion back.
No tax, okay, good.
Second.
Second by hack, discussion.
Is there any other run on, uh, like plug-ins so we don't have to do buy the C-batteries?
Well, typically when you're looking for a water leak on somebody's, uh, yard or out in the middle of the street and stuff like that, you're not gonna necessarily have access to.
Recharge it?
No, to, uh, to plug it in, is that what you're saying?
No, like how yourself.
Oh.
Where you recharge yourself.
Where you recharge it?
Yeah, do they have those, uh, this kind of items?
You know, they, they, they may, they may have rechargeable to where you would do that. But then, then what, what you end up finding out on some of those things is they have a particular life to them. And then when, when they're no longer good and you have to replace it, you almost have to replace the entire unit.
That's right.
Versus the batteries. So that, that was kinda the thought behind looking at this particular model.
Okay, well, thank you, good explanation, thank you.
Yeah, Harold?
Yeah, those leak detectors, uh, they wouldn't be used, something used every day, all day long.
No.
And, uh, cost of batteries would be minimal.
Correct, yep.
Who has used some, I have used them as detectors in the past.
Yeah. Who else has used these that we've, Dave, have you seen these in, in action?
This is the Water Authority.
Yeah, rural water, the board gave that presentation, this would be the model just like what he's using, he's let us actually play with it when he's been here, uh, working on some of our water leaks or helping us find them. And it's a really simple machine to run.
Yeah, the learning curve is minimal because they've already had some experience with it.
Probably would've paid for itself almost, that leak we had up on North Star too.
And that's what came to my mind, as soon as these guys talked to me about it, I was like, well, that's a no-brainer, so.
You have a discussion. All right, we have a motion and a second, roll call.
Hiller?
Aye.
Hack? Aye. Over Hiller.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And, uh, a- as everybody knows, we, we had a week of inaccessibility with regard to getting around and picking up trash and stuff like that, so I'm, I'm pretty certain that our citizens understand, simply look out the window and that, and that's all you really needed for an explanation, so, um, the folks are doing a fantastic job now, getting caught up and everything like that, so kudos to them having to deal with the type of situation they were dealing with. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Jason?
Well, Dan just kinda touched on what I was gonna touch on, uh, you know, through it all, we've just had what I would call minor breakdowns, had a cylinder break on the John Doe one-way early, oh, I don't know what morning it was, it's that Friday morning, Saturday morning, um, we got that up and running today, um, the garbage drop did run today. Toggle switch on our skid loader for our snow blower, that went down, so the parts are available in Mandan, Dave went down to maybe hunt for some extra cylinders, spare cylinders, which we're gonna have to go down and get quotes for, search quotes, it's brand specific. And then Dave also picked up the toggle switch that's back operational. Again, we had, on average, we get what, forty-three inches of snow in a snow, in a snow season, or no, forty-six, we've had forty-three, whatever, I mean, we've had a lot of snow in the last month, so, uh, I always relate to it as, and I know I'm comparing a big city to a small city, but I'm thankful where I live and where I've driven and, um, I mean, I'm interested how far it was looking right now, 'cause I'll bet you're, you're at a lane and a half on a four lane street on either side, so. I, I, as my madness in my head as a citizen goes, I ease it with those type of situations. And I've had some good discussions with citizens in, in town, not a lot, City Hall, Jerry probably fielded a lot, and I, I welcome people coming, I really do, so, um, that's about all I got.
Thank you, Dave, anything?
No, everything's up and running and we're widening streets and we getting shortly getting on the windrows off of Main Street, hopefully get everything up and running again and stuff.
And we did, we did have a conversation at our last commission meeting about good Samaritans in our community helping each other out, and, uh, I had about a five and a half foot drift all the way across Divide Street, um, after my driveway and, uh, had, had a neighbor up the hill who's got one of those shiny little orange tractors with a front-end bucket on it, and he was, uh, out enjoying himself and made a nice, uh, throughway there before the city had opportunity to come up with the snow blower and, and finish off and do a very, very fine job. So, again, kudos to, to those folks that are out there helping each other out, so appreciate that.
Dave or Jason, any, anything on looking at the used equipment for blade?
I haven't had a chance yet, or whenever I was in Bismarck today, I was gonna drive through Butler's Lot and look at that one, but they haven't moved any snow in their lot yet, it was a lot that deep and they're used to put in a block and if their salesman and parts department and stuff was as busy as when I was at Bobcat, I didn't go in and bother them, we never got out there to look at it, but hopefully in the real near future.
Yeah, well, for the rest of your information, um, Dave and Mike Frelick and Jason and I have been kind of, we've had quite a group chat going on between the four of us in last week, and, uh, Mike Frelick actually found a used snow gate in Washburn and Blade, and, uh, I think that's something we really need to be looking at. I think it's gonna be a long winter, and we're, I don't think the snow's gonna stop after this, uh, event, but you remember, we initially looked at new was upwards of forty-plus thousand and used, certified used was around twenty-five thousand, um, the, the one that Mike found, um, with controls, and we need to have to do a little bit of extra work to it to retrofit to our existing equipment is, would be less than ten thousand is what he, what he's found. And I just directed Dave and Jason and Mike to please start scouring, let's start finding something, um, we've had a lot of snow and a lot of, uh, people, I'm sure the Mathissons are here to discuss the snow, um, yeah, I think it can help our process, so I, when we, when we decided to push snow to the sides early in the season, no one expected an eighteen-incher and a seventeen-inch, uh, event to happen before Christmas. And we, we also know that those plows don't work great, um, when it comes to over twelve inches on a shot, but we were out before twelve inches came to, so I think there's, I think for the, I think we need to possibly invest and find something that's gonna work, but anyhow, just a quick little update on, on that for me.
I know, my, my immediate response to that was, it, it might not be worth the money, but, uh, certainly after this last adventure here, what does happen in it, in its fact is when the snow gets moved with a blade or whatever, it takes that light fluffy snow and when it's moved, it becomes a little bit more compact, and if you don't hit it immediately with your shovel or snow blower or whatever, it, uh, it hardens and it, and it becomes a challenge to any residential piece of equipment and, so.
Well, I know on my streets, and I, I don't ever ask for special attention on my street, actually, I tell my neighbors I'm, I'm last, so don't think you're gonna get off, um, good, but we still haven't pushed ours to the curbs on my street. And I was hesitant to even finish moving my snow because I know it's gonna get pushed right back in far my driveway, but it's.
I can give it up, Dave, Jerry, Mike did let me know, kind of in the heart of town from Napa to, well, I can read it on my phone if you don't mind.
Sure.
Basically, the internal part of town was just one machine that curved the curb, let me just read this. Everything from Napa to the police department from Seventh to Main Street are pushed curb to curb, everything south of Bain is pushing the curb, so basically through the heart of Old Town Hazen. So yes, we have, we haven't got over, I know I drove around Saturday evening or Saturday late afternoon and Sunday, um, I talked with Jerry, a few spots, see what we got, people still dumping it out in the street, but, and I told Mike and I told Dave, we gotta appreciate the people trying to help, you know, we've got some streets that are piled here, piled there, we're passable. Even though you're not totally clean, it's passable, so, um, again, I'll iterate, I, I don't really, you know, to me, I'm still young, I'm forty-nine, but I noticed straight away with going from the middle with the windrow and having it sit, and then we cleaned the whole town, windrow it and then clean it up, um, I'm glad we didn't do it for this last, the last four days because there would've been spots that would've been worse than your five-foot drift across Divide. And I'm not saying the whole, all of town would've been that way, but I appreciate not having that lumpy, bumpy street in the center. Uh, Monty just informed me, you know, I never thought, our UPS guy that's now scrambling to get presents out or packages before Christmas, really appreciates not having to drive on icy, sloopy streets with his UPS truck, again, thinking outside our box in my mind, those si- those situations, I know it's not the greatest, either way we go, it's not the greatest, but I just keep, try to keep my mind with pleasant thoughts of what, what are the, was it, what are the positives? We, we all, we don't care for snow, like Jerry said, we weren't expecting this much snow in a short amount of time, so.
And Dave, uh, kudos to your guys that all worked a lot of hours for going out early, early mornings and late at night and.
I've had a lot of positive comments, I passed that on to the guys.
Yep.
Had a few negative ones, but.
Oh, yeah.
I think the positive ones outweigh some of the negative ones.
I'll send you some of my negative ones. No, I agree, it's, it's the nature of the beast, it's not, it's not great for everybody, we know that, I'm su- sorry about that, um, but we are, you know, we're, we're short and, um, it's, saves time and money on diesel, and it's, it's not perfect, but, um, we will, I'll, we have public comment in a few minutes, I'll let you guys talk in a moment, if that's okay with you guys, okay? Monty, anything you know, uh, for fires, busting or police and fire?
No.
Okay, all right. Uh, Buster, HCD?
Uh, just a couple of things, uh, the Renaissance Zone meeting tomorrow, uh, that dot was going from last week, and we're look, going to look at expanding our zone, I think I've mentioned before, we could expand our zone to thirty-four blocks, and preliminarily what we're looking at is, right now it's twenty-four, but preliminarily what we're looking at is going up, is it Seventh to Seddings?
Fourth.
Fourth, excuse me, yeah.
Fourth Avenue and Fourth to Seventh Street.
And then also cutting across and taking it, it would, it would take us to, um, Seddings and Faro Block and that area, and then, uh, so we would have the option also to, to, we probably would be, still be within the, the zone to actually designate blocks on both sides of the street, which we probably will do, but certainly, I think we do want to put the west side in possibly, uh, where the apartment units are over there and whatever, and then, of course, the other ones would be the, the, the east side, so we'll, we'll have more discussion tomorrow as well, in terms of where we're going, of course, I'll be back if we decide, what we decide to do with that. The other thing that I would just, uh, want to remind everybody of is we do have the County Coalition meeting scheduled for Thursday at six o'clock over at the Civic Center and the main topic.
Bueller.
I didn't feel what I said.
No, you just said Civic Center.
Oh, okay, I feel, yeah, uh, but, uh, we're gonna have our legis- District Thirty-Three legislators, uh, present to, uh, uh, give some insights into, in terms of where they're at, yeah, now that they all have their, uh, committee assignments and so, that's all I have.
Thanks Buster.
Buster, just, uh, so, so you're aware, Monty and I have been having conversations with Moore Engineering to update the city portion.
Our city.
Of the comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And Jared and folks from Moore have forwarded back to us their documentation on that, and we've put together a pretty extensive list of, of capital projects for the future, and they've asked us to take a look at that list and prioritize it and, and then give them opportunity to kind of finalize that and then get that back to the folks.
Right.
It's moving forward.
Good, good, glad to hear it.
Thank you. Uh, one last thing I have to mention is, I, I noticed that we had a preliminary drawing for the fire department building, and I know Chief Bury isn't here and neither is Mr. Wejerk to talk about this, but didn't I, didn't they say that they were gonna do drive-through doors, that they were gonna do doors on the east and west side?
Talked about.
It's not on the drawing, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not sure if that's an option that they're looking at, depending on money or, but if you do talk to them, that'd be great to find it out and, and I know the con- what I mentioned is concrete included in that price, they said yes, but obviously that might be just the buildings, that include from the doors all the way east, it looks like it's gonna be about, probably fifty feet more concrete for the apron coming from the doors out to the road. Okay. Okay, I would assume that it's not gonna be as dirt. Yeah, yeah, so when, when they do come, Monty, it'd be great if we had that, and then plumbing and electrical as well, that's, make sure we have a, hopefully we have a better picture of what they're looking at.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving down to thirteen, public comment, Nancy, you were here first, did you have something to comment about?
Well, actually, if I, uh, it's been pretty hard on all of us, I think, so I really am glad to hear some of your positive, uh, comments about maybe changing blocking the driveways and stuff like that with maybe getting a, a gate, I would welcome that because I agree with you, Dan, it is very difficult to get through that, even if you're right on it, um, and our equipment, really the little guy stuff isn't built for this, and I know it's hard on the city stuff, which is kinda built for it, so, um, and I do wanna thank the crews for being out there, um, you know, it's been tough, I know that they've worked long and hard hours, have been doing a great job, I'm just hoping we can change blocking people's driveways and fire hydrants and they do a pretty good job around some of them, but last year they did a wonderful job, we didn't have as much snow, but, um, and like you're saying, maybe it was a good idea to, to push it off to the sides, but I would really love to physically not have to try to remove that chunky monkey stuff, and I can't afford to hire somebody, like most of the residents, to have somebody and, and have that luxury, and I was hoping that a lot of neighbors would unite, but what I've seen is almost a division, where if they like you, they will help you, and if they don't, then they won't, and, um, that's really sad, I was really hoping that we would bond together, the community, and help each other, not that a lot of people haven't, but, um, I was surprised by some of the actions that I've seen by individuals and, uh, so I'm hoping that, that maybe with this Christmas spirit, we'll all have a sense of love and joy put back into us to help each other out again, and maybe we'll find a solution to e- ease everyone with the street crew and everything, so thank you very much for thinking ahead and looking at the snow gate, I appreciate that.
Well, it's not a guarantee, but it's something we, we need to explore.
I think it would be, I, I'm all for it.
Of course you are, it's not a big part, but it's.
I don't like, you know, paying a little bit more of those tax dollars, but.
Kate, Monty, you got that written down?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, hey, you know, you guys did do a great job with removing it last year, and
I'm kinda paying a little bit more and not having it done, so it's.
Okay, appreciate your comments, Nancy.
So, thank you.
Yep, Mr. and Mrs. Mathison?
Well, I'd like to complain about the snow removal, the system they're using, uh, yes, we did have seventeen inches in November and eighteen and nineteen in December, and pushed it to the side, we gotta fight it all winter, push it to the center and haul it out, after it started in November, we wouldn't have had that seventeen inches to fight now, and last spring pushed it to the side, uh, my girlfriend April took care of it for us, but, uh, now, get rid of it as fast as you can, there's a safety hazard, the big piles of snow at the corners, you, you gotta drive out in the middle of the street to see if it turned, that's a safety hazard, and like I said, myself, I'm not healthy enough to really go out and help all my neighbors anymore, can't do it, and, uh, I struggle to get my own out, and I think we shouldn't have pushed it center and hauled it out, yes, it's gonna be long hours, years ago I've worked long hours too, so that's fact of life, expense is gonna be up, but the expense pushing to the side's gonna be up too. That's my opinion.
Good, thank you.
Haul it out and.
My biggest, biggest concern is in the driveway, um, we did have a neighbor that came over and blew us out, and in the afternoon we were plugged in again, and we just can't, we can't handle it, it'd be nice if somebody could, through the city or if we had a list of names that we could have somebody come in and open it up, um, it just isn't doable for us.
You know, physically, I can't handle it, that much.
No, I, and I.
And we do have a yard that a lot of snow could be blowing in, um, and there is a empty lot behind where, you know, you're coming down the street, doesn't it, wouldn't hurt my feelings if some of it got, uh, kind of blown up there, but the biggest thing is removing that bridge, it just.
We know it's not convenient for everybody and, yeah, I've got a couple neighbors that couldn't leave either, luckily myself and a few other neighbors have some time and energy, so.
In the past, I cleaned up many of driveway neighbors, but I can't do it anymore.
Yeah, no, you don't expect.
One of these things, it don't work.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Maybe that's something, you know, that, some folks take it upon themselves, they look around and they know their neighbors and they, they help and stuff like that, you know, maybe that's something that, uh, if, if folks have the wherewithal and are willing to, to help folks that aren't able to do it on their own, maybe they can contact City Hall and just let, let us know that they're available, and then, you know, we could put something out there that if you're in need of this particular service or whatever, contact City Hall and maybe we can offer up, I don't know if we can legally do that or not, but.
I don't know either.
Well, our, our neighbor's been very generous with doing this, but came Saturday, he had to go to work.
Sure, sure.
And so then he's coming home quite late in the day.
You work the twelve-hour shift, you don't wanna go help your neighbor for another twelve.
And this is your last three, four more months, you know, so it's gonna be a long, it'll be a long winter.
And like Jason said, any, any solution that we look at isn't gonna be perfect for, for every situation out there and, you know, I, I had that drift this year, the last four years, I never had to run my snow blower, so, you know.
My snow blower's set in the garage too. Well, my snow blower's in the garage too for about three years.
You know, it's just one of those things. I think we got caught here and, you know, I don't think there's a perfect answer. But thank you for the feedback.
Get a gate or something.
Yeah.
Somebody help us out in that situation would really be appreciated.
Years ago, after retiring, I had about 10 or 11 driveways that I would blow out. Ain't going to do it no more.
Yeah.
Well, I went through 11 gallons of gas helping all my neighbors. And then I refilled and got the price tag, and I went, oh my! But, you know, it's, but it is hard on my four little equipment and me. So I said, I got to take a break. So if you guys can help us out, I know that you're willing to try new things and I'm with you on that, so.
Thank you for your input and we appreciate it. We will try to do better. We're still, yeah, we're trying to figure it out. Okay, moving down to 14, approval of bills. Anything extra, Monty?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The list is left here, yeah.
Is that that switch?
Which was that?
Is that the switch from today that we got, Monty, or no?
Yes. There's some other parts for pump belts from Bobcat too. They're belt tensioner.
Got you. Motion approved?
Motion by Hack.
I'll second it.
Second by Pillar. Discussion. Roll call.
Hack?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.